I would like to call the Board of Selectmen to order. We are ordered, too.
You guys feel ordered? I'd like to call the School Committee Public Session to order as well. This evening's agenda is light. We really only have one item on our agenda this evening. And it's to fill the current vacancy in the School Committee that was left when Mr. Croft left the committee. This person will serve until the April 2015 election, just in case there's any questions about that. We have three excellent candidates this evening, and I thank you very much for offering your time and your willingness to perform this duty for Redding. Amy Kayler is here this evening, Gary Nein is here this evening, and Rob Gibbs is here. And as I said, as I reviewed the candidates' resumes and portfolios, I was struck by the depth of the accomplishments by each. And I think Redding is very fortunate to have three candidates such as yourselves willing to perform this. Okay. So I thank you, both as a Redding resident and as a member of the School Committee. The way this works is that the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, by our charter, are tasked with selecting someone to fill the seat. There are, there will be, I'm sure, very shortly, ten members that will vote on the candidate. The candidate will need to receive a majority of votes. So the candidate will have to receive six votes. Majority after that will win. If a candidate does not receive six votes, we'll continue voting until we can select a candidate or until somebody makes a motion perhaps to resubmit and restart the process. Hopefully that doesn't happen. What I'd like to do, as I stall for time, I'd like to, if it's okay, I'd like to have ladies first this evening, so I'm going to ask Amy Kayler to come up and sit in front of the Board. Each candidate, please feel free to give an opening statement. I'll ask the Committee, both Committees, if they have questions of the candidate. Maybe we'll go, we'll alternate School Committee, Selectmen, or we'll do something that we think is fair. After that, you're more than welcome to give a closing statement. Questions? Awesome. Thank you very much. Written excuse later, but right now we're going to get started. Again, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Kay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for having me here. My name's Amy Kayler, and I've lived in Redding for four years. And a little background, I've worked in public schools for nearly all of my professional life. So I'm deeply committed to providing an excellent education for all students. I have worked at Charlestown High School for the last twelve years, which is part of Boston Public Schools. And there I was a teacher, and then I moved into a teacher leader role, so I was the head of a small learning community at the school. And then I went back and got my principal license in school leadership, and then I became an administrator there. So most of my experience is from Boston Public Schools. And because of the different roles, I think I have a good sense of what good schools need, what students need, from a variety of perspectives. Most recently, my latest role is that of a parent. So I'm a parent to a five-year-old, Avery, who's going to be starting at Barrows in one month, less than one month. I also have a daughter who is one and a half. So I bring to that, this perspective as well. And I've been on the Board of Redding's Connect the Tots group for the last year, which is a group that brings Redding families of young kids together for activities. So I've gotten a sense of that perspective as well, though I am newer to town. I feel like I know a lot of parents of preschoolers, young elementary. So because of all this, I am very committed to Redding Public Schools. I'm very interested and excited to contribute for the next couple decades, because I'll be a part of it. That's probably enough.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, welcome. Thank you very much for throwing your hat in the ring.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
And I'd like to say, just an introduction, we have three amazing candidates here. And I do hope that this is a very challenging process, choosing from three great candidates. So I do hope that all of you stay involved, because I really value what you have to add to all the decisions coming up. But that being said, we have this process. So I did have one question. One of the things that I found, I'm one of the newest School Committee members, and I'm coming from both a role of volunteering and from writing for the newspaper about the schools. And in those two roles, I had the experience of sort of easy access to whomever I wanted, whenever I wanted, in a way. I mean, and so it's been a learning process, learning the protocol. Because now, as a School Committee member, there are certain protocol I need to go through so that I don't put people on the spot, so that I am a team, part of a team discussion of the meeting laws. And that's been a lesson. So I'm wondering, wondering what you think will be, how you will sort of navigate this new role as School Committee member, coming from an administrative role to a School Committee role? How do you feel that you'll navigate this communication and decision-making process with the rest of the Committee and within the town, being the mediator?
Sure. I have never been on a town committee, so it's new to me, obviously. But I have had, I feel, a lot of experience with navigating difficult waters. So I was a teacher for, I was a teacher prior, but at Charlestown, I was a teacher for three years before I stepped into the teacher leader role. And that was a shift where I had to navigate, you know, some tensions between teachers and administrators, students and parents. And then when I got my principal license, I then stepped into the role of evaluator. It shifted again, and I had to navigate really difficult waters of actually evaluating out some teachers that I had formerly worked next to. So I have experience with navigating sort of this, you know, political world in a small nutshell of a school, but I've gained a lot of experience and a lot of confidence with that. In terms of learning the ropes, I would have a lot to learn. But I'm also very eager to learn. So I was talking with Elaine a little bit via email, and Dr. Dougherty, about that, and what the time commitment would be to sort of ramp up. And it sounds like the best thing to do would be to talk with some of you in the time that you have, and try to learn, you know, learn about protocol and learn about the financial process. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for preparing your summary. It's, public service is a labor of love, obviously. You do it because you want to do it. And fortunately, Redding is so multifaceted, we've got something that appeals to everyone, whether it's gardening, or historical, or conservation, or education in schools. What do you know, what do you know of the challenges facing Redding today, as you sit here today? Have you been able to kind of educate yourself as to kind of what are the challenges this group is facing?
I think, in my opinion, the biggest one, the one that I've heard about the most, is providing free full-day kindergarten and the economic issues that come along with that, with providing the space for that. It's something that I've heard about, just because, you know, the context of who I know, people are very concerned. So to me, that's number one. I also am aware that you, the School Committee recently decided to go with the park for next year, so I have experience with the MCAS, and I'm aware of a lot of the ramifications of park versus MCAS. I guess those are two that I'm aware of.
Since you mentioned it, I'll ask you a follow-up. What's your opinion of park versus MCAS? And it's a done deal as far as this group is concerned, but what's your opinion?
From what I've seen, the park is a lot harder. I thought the MCAS was hard, actually. But I think the park requires a different sort of thinking, and different kind of learning, and a different kind of teaching. And I think that there's probably huge challenges with getting a district of learners ready for a new assessment like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Okay. I'm thrown. I've never seen food at one of our meetings before, and this is really throwing me off, so.
That's why he stopped conversation.
Yes, Mrs. Brost.
Thank you. I feel obligated to welcome you. I'm a Barrows mom, I have two kiddos at home, so welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thanks very much.
I look forward to seeing you on the blacktop. So the School Committee has three main areas of responsibility. Based on your background, clearly you've got a phenomenal set of educational skills in terms of evaluation of the superintendent of schools and setting school policy. The third area of responsibility is oversight of the budget, which is massive. I was wondering if you could speak to your experience professionally, personally, anything that you've done that would prepare you, and how you would approach analyzing a budget of forty million dollars.
Again, my experience is on the local school level. So during my time as a teacher leader and administrator, I was involved on the leadership team every year, so that would be eight or nine years with the budget conversation with our headmaster. So our headmaster was, each headmaster has been very open, including all the leadership team. So I'm pretty well-versed in how it works on the school level. Of course, I would have to learn the district level, because I have very little experience. I just have the experience of once it gets to us. But I'm at least familiar with the components of a budget, and also, I think, using your strategic plan to guide your decisions around a budget, so that when you bring the decision out to the community, people understand. It's a more transparent process.
Thank you.
Great. One more Selectman?
Thank you, Ms. Coler, for putting your candidacy forward. I have one question. Redding's per pupil expenditure ranks below its peer communities, yet Redding schools are highly rated. What does this tell you?
Well, I guess money doesn't always equal the quality of education out. And I think we see that throughout the state, throughout the country. So Boston and Cambridge have one of the highest per pupil expenditures, and their outcomes are not nearly as strong. So I would imagine, I would attribute that to the quality of the leadership, the quality of leadership in the schools, the quality of instruction, and the quality of, you know, of the preparation that students have when they enter the school. So the quality of the educational background that the community brings itself.
Further questions for this candidate?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So just following up, continuing on sort of the financial area, I just, maybe you could elaborate a little bit on sort of the tough budgetary decisions. You already sort of mentioned, you know, having to make those tough decisions about evaluating teachers out that you had worked alongside with.
Mm-hmm.
One of the aspects of being on the School Committee is really having to make tough district, tough decisions district-wide, when it's going to impact the mothers or fathers and children that you stand next to in the schoolyard. And so, you know, maybe you could elaborate a little bit about some of your experience, so that I can sort of judge where, how you would be able to handle that.
Sure. Specifically, the example I used earlier, I was, I think, our, Charlestown was in a position of having lingering teachers who had been in the school for far too long. There hadn't been evaluations prior to, with a previous headmaster. A new headmaster came in, and it was really clear that there were some really low-performing teachers. And as it, I felt very supported, so as a team, we worked very much together. But ultimately, when it came down to it, it was my evaluations on two, and partly on the third, that involved a year and a half of really difficult conversations, a lot of one-on-one time, and a lot of mentoring time, trying to improve the level of instruction. But ultimately, it didn't come far enough. And it was very difficult, because one woman in particular was, had been a mentor of mine when I was first teaching. So I was up late nights with this decision. But I knew, I mean, what drove me in that was knowing those students who were sitting in her classroom. And when I, you know, I knew those kids well, and I knew what was happening in that room, because I had been in there twenty-five or thirty times in the previous whatever, you know, month. And so I think that's ultimately what has to drive your decision, is knowing your students and knowing that every student deserves a good education. And those tough decisions are easier if you keep students at the focus.
Thank you.
Further questions? Feel free to raise your hand, and I'll certainly give you a talk. Little in decision. Go ahead, Mrs.
So, continuing with the financial components, one of the challenges, as you mentioned, for our town is being able to afford full-day kindergarten and the buildings and all of the space that comes along with that. We also have to, as a town, figure out how we're going to afford everything we have in the town. So I'm wondering what you would consider, what kind of ways you would be able to approach this, to maintain the split that we have today between the school and the town, so that we do not funding all-day kindergarten at the expense of operations in the town, so.
I guess, I mean, I certainly recognize that there are competing interests. I think, I think the approach to that is to truly listen to the different stakeholders, to show that you're listening, to be respectful, and you're listening. And I guess to make the compelling argument through the use of research and data. You know, I feel like if you can use the data in your conversations, in your presentations, to show that this isn't, you know, that this isn't a very important issue, it's an issue of equity, then people will be more on board with it. And also, I mean, it is in the town's best interest to have a great education system. And so, to the extent that you can, constantly promoting, that isn't important. That really is the town's biggest priority, in addition, of course, to snow plowing the streets. I don't know if I've answered that, but.
Yeah, I think, well, if I can just do a follow-up. So it's important to fund it, but there's endless amounts of funding that's needed for the schools, and we will never have the money to do everything that is wanted. And so there's a need to balance. And I'm just wondering how you will bring in some balance to be able, you know, how you would apply some of that balance?
I guess I'll just reiterate, but I do think that listening to the town, as well as to parents, to teachers, is the critical piece. So making sure people felt, feel heard. You know, clearly, I need to learn more about town issues, about, you know, that component. But that's, I guess, my best answer. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Robbins?
Yeah. Welcome, thank you.
Thanks.
Just to kind of dig further on Ms. Webb's question, can you talk about how you, I mean, as a member of the School Committee, you represent over four thousand students, not just the Barrows community, or the grades that your particular children are in? Can you talk about how you keep that, keep that focus when you're making decisions, especially in light of the potential of an election coming up in April?
I, I think getting into the different schools is probably a piece of that. You know, I don't know the Redding schools personally, so I would look forward to visiting some, and going to events, and therefore, you know, spreading my net, and getting to know more people and more perspectives. But I have had experience, my experience at Charlestown High School is an incredibly diverse school, with just a huge, it probably is one of the most diverse schools in the state. It's, so we've got all types of learners there. So there's a huge special ed program of three hundred students, there's Spanish Shelter English immersion, there's Chinese Shelter English immersion, there's kids who are in AP track and go on to Bates and Bowden, and then there's kids who are hugely undercredited and overage. So I certainly have experience thinking about all kids, and addressing the needs of all kids. And during my time, we actually started a program within our school to specifically help kids who were undercredited and overage. It was called Diploma Plus, that helped them to recover some of their credit. So I feel like I do, one strength of mine is thinking big picture, thinking about all kids. And my experience, of course, is in high school. So I hope that I will be able to think of all those different perspectives.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
Totally separate topic. You, just curious, in your experience in Charlestown, have you had any role in collective bargaining or working with the union at all?
No, aside from being a member of the BTU, and then being a member of BASIS, which is the administrators' union. But, and, so not with negotiations, no, only with being a member.
I have two quick questions, and then you're more than happy to provide a closing statement if there are no other questions. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Robbins.
Hi. Thanks for offering your service to the community. I really value that.
Thanks for having me.
I'd like to shift gears kind of completely. In Redding, we've had a, we've had a partnership with families, and the School Department, and local police, and the town. It's on a very important topic that has affected our town, and that's substance abuse among our young people. Can you share whatever background and experience you might have in that? And could you maybe tell us how you see the School Department's role in that partnership?
Yeah, I mean, I think my thoughts on that have grown tremendously over my professional career. I once felt that, I once, I guess, believed that that was not the responsibility of, that schools could, there was a limit to how much schools could take on. That to ask schools to educate kids and to the highest degree, and to also take on all those other social issues was too much for schools. But I think in my experience, I have seen that schools have a huge role in providing the necessary counseling and various support services that those specific students require. Because at times, I mean, hopefully, parents will be on board, but there's many, many times that families are not actually able to provide the support that the students need, and that has to come from somewhere. So maybe it does come from the police, maybe, but the easiest route to access those students who are in crisis, I think, is the schools.
So just a really quick follow-up. It certainly isn't singular responsibility to anybody. It's a collaborative, and to that end, we do have a coalition. Have you had a chance to understand about what our CASA is and the coalition?
No.
Thanks.
I was going to ask two questions. Have you considered running for this position in April? And if not, maybe, were there any reasons behind that?
I hadn't, no, I hadn't. I worked until, this past school year was my first year on leave, so I was actually home for the first time with my kids. And I, and I was sort of immersed there. So I hadn't really thought about it.
That's perfectly valid.
Until I came up with it, yeah.
In a very quick follow-up, have you thought about April yet?
Yeah, I have. And I would, I know it's not very far off. I'm generally interested in continuing. And I think that this would be a really wonderful opportunity to get my feet wet and see what it's all about, and try to contribute in the short time that I would have.
Sure.
Amy, thank you again enough for coming out tonight. Just a real quick question. What was the biggest deciding factor that made you want to put your hat into the ring? And, you know, was it an issue, or is it more larger than that?
That's a good question. I, I mean, I am very interested in equity, in providing for all students. And I do think the kindergarten issue is a critical one. I mean, there's a lot of families who don't provide their kids with full day because of the financial issue. So I guess that is one of the big things. But I also, I mean, I've worked in public schools for almost my whole professional life, and I, I guess I'm looking for different ways to continue to contribute. And I see this as a really great way to learn more, and also to start to give to my community.
Thank you.
Further questions? Would you like to have a closing statement?
I, sure. First of all, thank you for welcoming me and for giving me the chance to be here. It's exciting. I would have a lot to learn in this position, but I also have, I think, the experience and the enthusiasm to jump in and learn quickly. There's a lot that I already know, and there's a lot that I would have to learn. But I, I'm just eager for the chance to learn more about Redding schools and to contribute, so that's it.
Chris, if I may, we obviously have three candidates here tonight, and in the event that you aren't selected, there are literally hundreds of opportunities, formal opportunities for you to participate, both as part of the town side, or the school side, or any of the cultural groups. And even in the absence of a Board, many of our members have actually actively attended in official capacity purely to become a voice of the public. And I'd urge you to consider working off the statement you just closed with. You're anxious to get involved. There's no shortage in this town of involvement opportunities, and I'd urge you to take those up should tonight not turn as you would like.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to take the chair, and whatever, and ask if my ex-football coach could go next? So Mr. Gary Nein is our next candidate. Welcome, Mr. Nein.
Thank you. And thank you for this opportunity.
If you'd like to start with an opening statement?
Sure, I think some of you know me, may know my background. Those of you that don't, lifelong resident of Redding, attended the Redding Public Schools. Just, you know, currently initiating my thirty-ninth year in education as a teacher, administrator, now currently as an adjunct faculty member at Salem State BU and Cambridge College, in particular supervising student teachers. And previous to that, I was administrator in Davis Public Schools, initially Director of Applied Arts, which is everything that didn't get tested, art, music, physical education, health, technology, education, all important, very important. And then the opportunity arose through some grant writing that I had done, co-writing, job shift primarily to physical education and health, and also nurses. and also nurses, and good thing the nurses really knew what they were doing, because they really didn't have a lot to offer. Um, but I was also a grant manager. I supervise, I wrote grants, um, was a project director for grants, um, oh, the grants, we had a federal, two federal grants, uh, Carolyn White Pep Grant, which we also had in Reading, uh, that I was involved in, um, which was focused on physical education primarily and health education. Also, uh, Drug-Free Community Support Grant, which talks to what John mentioned, um, was the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition that we had in Danvers, also in Reading, uh, worked on that grant, um, and a few other grants that were related to, uh, social competency bullying and so forth. So, um, so I think I accomplished a lot in Danvers, um, probably about three to four million dollars in grant money that we brought into the district, not, not just myself, but, um, a person I worked with closely named Peg Salida. In Reading, um, where I spent majority of my career, um, thirty-plus years, I taught elementary physical education, health, high school physical education, health, um, was also department head, uh, at the high school, and also, uh, director of adult community education, also involved with, uh, substance abuse prevention, um, SAPAC, substance, substance abuse prevention, I forget exactly what it turned, but it morphed into our CASA. Um, that was a very small group. And, uh, but it did springboard the initiative, um, to write a grant to fund our CASA. I was also an interim principal, um, in Reading at, uh, Josh Reaton, uh, spent most of my career at Darrow's Elementary School as an assistant principal. And then I was also a project director for, uh, three grants, uh, Pep Grant here, Title, Title Four, and then Executive Office of Public Safety Grant, which was primarily focused on, so, um, prevention, um, skills-based prevention at the elementary level and, uh, and as I said, co-wrote, um, the Safe and Healthy School Grant, which, you know, essentially funded, uh, our CASA, Erica McNamara's position. So, I feel fortunate throughout my career that I've had a lot of different opportunities, um, did a lot of different things. Work, I, I loved working with students, but I also really enjoyed the opportunity to be an administrator, work in valuation, um, just completed all my coursework for, uh, my doctorate in education. I'll be starting my, uh, thesis, well, I already started it, and hopefully finish it sometime, um, maybe, I'm optimistically stating January. It's probably very optimistic, but I, I want to have something that, to shoot for. And, um, I also, as I said, work in, uh, higher ed and also consult with school districts, so I'm out there a lot. Uh, I work probably with eight, nine, maybe ten different school districts, not all at the same time, um, working with them on, on their grants, primarily, uh, the physical education grant that we talked about, the, that I mentioned, the Carolyn White Pep Grant. And I'm in contact with superintendents and department heads and assistant superintendents, principals, um, and then, um, I think, um, you know, finally, I, I really think that, you know, as I, as I said, my main interest in this position is that, uh, I'm, I'm a strong advocate for our public education and, um, really looking forward for the opportunity to do whatever I can to enhance currently what we're doing, if I can, and, uh, support the initiatives that, uh, we're currently faced with.
Thank you. Just talk to my left this time, Mr. Reed.
Uh, Gary, uh, thank you again for, uh, coming out tonight.
Thank you, my pleasure.
A question that's, uh, that may be limited only to, uh, the occasional candidate is, uh, I understand you have a family member who is a, a current employee of the schools?
Mm-hmm.
And I've been advised that on its face, that is not a conflict, but under the circumstance, would you be willing to file a disclosure, a disclosure statement with the town clerk about your spouse's employment to avoid the appearance of a conflict?
Sure, yes, of course.
Okay.
I, I will state that my wife will not talk about education to me, so. She comes home, doesn't want to talk about it.
No shop talk at home, huh?
Very little.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank, thank you, Gary. Question, it's probably similar to John's, uh, you know, as a, as a former employee, uh, you have many friends and I'm sure still work in the district. How, how do you, how will you handle it, uh, when one of the, if one of them approaches you looking for some type of special dispensation or something as a member of the school committee?
I'm not so sure they'd be, I don't know, maybe, you know, maybe they will be asking me for some sort of dispensation, but I think the most important thing is, yeah, there's, there's no question I'd be faced with that, but I think, um, it's important to listen to people, um, and I think, um, the, when you're making a decision, it's important, as many of the decisions that, well, all of the decisions that are made here, the, as much information as you can get, gather is important. Um, you know, wherever the, the channel is, whatever network you, you're using, so I think that's important to listen, to ask questions, but not make any promises or, you know, give any opinions, um, you know, I think it's really just important to be a good listener, not just with, you know, colleagues that I, you know, previously worked with, but with the population in general.
Thank you. Questions from the selectmen? Sure.
Um, I asked the same question I asked last, uh, few, um, what was the big driver for you wanting to, to put your, your hat in the ring and become a school committee?
Well, I wanted to do this for a while, but, um, my coursework at Northeastern really didn't allow me to do it. I, I thought about it, Karen Janowski had put the bug in my, in the worst times and kept telling me to do it and telling me to do it, and, um, this just seemed like a great opportunity. I just finished all my coursework, um, January twenty-ninth, uh, January twentieth, June twenty-ninth, and, um, my schedule is much more flexible now, because when you're, you're working on your thesis, you can pick and choose the time you want to do it as opposed to, um, coursework where you had to get it done by a timeline and, um, certain amount of reading that had to be accomplished. I knew I just couldn't commit to the, to the timeframe that was necessary to, to be a viable member of the Reading, uh, school committee. And, but I also think, last, um, last town meeting, April town meeting, um, you know, I heard that, um, you know, financially, we're, we're not in the best of, of circumstances, um, as a town. We've always been well managed, and, um, when I hear that, it's concerning. It's, I don't think it's someone crying wolf, um, which might happen sometimes in some school districts and some communities, and may have happened in the past here, but I know it's not the case now. And, um, I also think that, um, you know, I, I do think the kindergarten, uh, full-day kindergarten is a pressing issue, um, common core, um, that there's high expectations for our kindergartens now. I mean, they're going to come out with expectations of certain skills and knowledge that I'm not, I don't think anybody's confident that a half-day kindergarten would provide them those skills. And we are using the PARC, um, assessment, um, which is based off the common core, which is one of the strengths of it. So, um, that, and then I think also another driving force too is behavioral health, that I know, um, I've had discussions with Dr. Doherty about it, um, offered, um, my insight as, as it was applicable, and, um, and I'm really concerned about what we can do as a school district to, 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 uh, essentially, you know, work on prevention strategies. I know right now we're doing a great job on intervention strategies, but prevention's really a key thing.
Thank you. Mrs. Dobson?
Hi, thank you so much for putting yourself out here.
Also a catalyst that encourages me to do this.
So, I'm actually going to rephrase, reframe my original question to Amy, um, in terms of my challenge when I entered this new role of the protocols and the different relationships between me and my constituents, if I can put it that way, and the teachers, and, and there are certain ways of interacting that changed. And I'm, I'm going to frame that actually, because I know you've been doing important work with district-determined measures.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you're, you're an expert and becoming an expert on that process.
We'll see.
And that's something the schools are working on as well? So, I'm wondering if you can talk about how you'll balance your knowledge, your research on the district-determined mess, measures, but also the respect of the, um, channels that you need to go through when working with the schools about those. Did that make sense?
Sounds like it's almost two different questions.
Okay.
But as far as district-determined measures goes, um, you know, that's, um, it's going to be new to a lot of districts. Um, I'm not sure, um, if Reading's piloting them this year or they implemented them last year. I think they implemented them last year or they piloted them. So, you know, I, I would have that insight, um, to offer, but, um, I'm, I'm not really an expert on it now. I've done a lot of reading on it, done a lot of research on it. I'll do more research outside of the Reading Public Schools with a few other school districts that I'll be doing a case study with. But in terms of, you know, um, interacting with constituents, I think is, as I mentioned earlier, is an important, uh, important piece. And I think, I think I always appreciated if I had, um, a, a bone of contention, let's say, that if I had talked to a school committee member, uh, a member of the Board of Selectmen or whatever, Recreation Committee, that they were always good listeners and, um, did ask questions. And, um, I think that's what I would, I would, not I think, I know that's what I would model. And in my experience too, you know, as an administrator, as, as, um, a previous, uh, person had spoken, Amy, I think that's her name? Yeah. You know, I think it, you, you have to have confidentiality and be respectful. But nonetheless, I still think, um, listening to, you know, somebody calls you on the phone and, and wants to talk to you about something, um, you've got to be responsive, because you represent them, um, as well as the students that are, you know, attending the Reading Public Schools. Is that answer?
It does. And I, can I, Chair, may I follow up?
Yes.
And it's sort of a clarification, I think. So, the next step is, um, as school committee members, we're not necessarily the primary expert, uh, we're not the primary expert on different aspects of the curriculum, even though we're intermediaries. And it's really important to make sure that questions are answered by the experts, by those who, where the buck stops.
Mm-hmm.
The people that are frontline on those issues. And so, part of my question was, um, how do you foresee yourself dealing with not being able to actually necessarily be the answer, the one who answers the question for the school system, but directing people to the appropriate experts?
Right, so I think what, what you're getting at and, um, what, again, I've, I've seen happen and what I would do as well is if I don't, um, whether or not I think I have the answer or not, it maybe is not appropriate for me to give them a, you know, a response. It's not something I, I'm not going to be, um, in a position where I'm going to second-guess anybody, but I would certainly point them in the direction of, you know, the superintendent's office, to the experts that are there. I do think it's important that we become experts in, in what we're doing. I think that, um, you know, we need to ask a lot of questions, um, within the, within the town, but also, you know, seek out information too to, to make good decisions. I think that's one of the things that I can offer too, is that I've done a lot of networking, particularly the last four years, um, three years, um, working in with these different school districts and seeing what other school districts are doing, and also my experience in Danvers, um, which is a, a well-run school district in a, in a school, town that's very similar to Reading. So, yeah, I would be pointing them in the direction of the superintendent's office for questions that, um, I wouldn't have the answer to or, or shouldn't give the answer to, let's put it that way.
Thank you.
For the selectmen, questions? Mr. Halsey?
Gary, I'd like to thank you for offering your services.
Thanks.
I know you're no stranger to this, um, which is kind of a framework for my question. I know I've seen you at town meeting, um, it's where the budget process ultimately, you know, meets the road.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about your experience, whether it's in previous positions or as a town meeting member, relative to the understanding of the budget and the process?
One, one thing I didn't mention, I've been a town meeting member for twenty years.
Yes.
So, I've sat and, and listened to budgets being presented twenty times, um, and asked questions and listened, and I think it's a great format, one that, you know, is, is perfect in terms of how we make decisions, as far as I'm concerned. Maybe everything doesn't come out right, but not, I'd say, you know, a strong percentage of the time it does, and, um, I think it's, it's great to have, um, input from, um, from those in attendance, and, and also it's even better when you get a phone call, um, from a constituent that has a hot-button topic that they want you to. So, I'm familiar with the budget process. I've seen it presented, um, from my perspective of, um, in the Danvers Public Schools as administrator, I was a member of the Administrative Council, I was responsible for preparing the budget for my departments, but then also defending them, you know, to the Administrative Council, because there's only so much money, as we know, and, um, everybody has, you know, needs and, and things that they feel are important. So, I think the, the thing that I learned best was the give and take in, in recognizing, um, priorities that are, that are really important, and, um, so I, I feel comfortable that, you know, my, my background with finance is, um, going to be beneficial to the, to the Reading Public Schools, school committee in particular.
Thanks. Mrs. Brozsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Honestly, Mr. Halsey just took my question. But I put back up, ready to go. I think one of the strengths, I feel, in Reading is how collaboratively the boards work together, and it is in that way in every community. How do you see yourself, on the one hand, advocating for the schools, but on the other hand, understanding that we're all part of the same town, and much like your administrative council meetings, there's only so much money, there are only so many resources? How do you see yourself striking that balance between being a strong advocate for the schools, but also working collaboratively with all the stakeholders in the town?
Again, I, I really think it's important to, you know, go back to, um, you know, you can, being a critical thinker, um, asking really good questions, being a really good listener, and, and, um, you know, essentially, um, weighing out what, you know, is a priority, what you hear is a priority, and again, um, you know, what, what the constituents have to say too. And, um, I think that's the best I can do to describe how I feel it, it would work.
Thank you.
Mrs. West? Absolutely.
Thank you. Let me see if I can remember after getting that special. Um, I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit about what you see the role of the school committee in terms of oversight for the school finances and budget? How do you see the school committee playing a role in that?
Well, the school committee would be, obviously, um, listening to the superintendent and the administrators in terms of what they feel are priorities, and then also, you know, listening to what we have for available funds. And, um, I think collaborating, again, you know, you can go back to the twenty-first century skills of collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, communication, and those are all four, the four Cs that you really need to use as the driving force in making decisions. And, um, I think you have to be able to think outside the box, and, and, uh, maybe there's a less expensive approach to something, you know, is there a better way to do it? And, and really, um, that's when I think the, the critical thinking and creativity comes into play.
Mrs. West?
Thank you. I, I think it's important, as we go through this process, that we try to make sure we hear sort of the same types of topic areas from each candidate, so I'm not asking the same question. Uh, I, I would like you to comment on the question that Amy addressed that was asked about the, um, per pupil and educational outcomes. And, you know, as you're aware, um, if you've been at town meeting, you understand how that, uh, our, our position against the state average has shifted over the last seven to ten years. So, maybe you could comment on, you know, how you feel about that. It sort of leads right from the last question.
Yeah, I, I have, uh, mixed emotions, but I, you know, as, as a, as an administrator and a teacher, you know, and I can also tell you from, um, my experience and exposure to grants, that, you know, money can do a lot of great things, and, um, it's important to, to place that balance, and, and, um, I think Amy had a great response in terms of, you know, it, money doesn't always reflect the amount of work that's, that's put forth and, and the commitment that, uh, put forth and, and the commitment that, uh, the administrators and particularly the teachers put into it. Um, and the support that you can get from, you know, the, the, the community in general too. I mean, I, I know that in Reading, um, again, I have, I have some comparison. I, I was in the Danvis Public Schools, and I can tell you that the, the Reading teachers that I'm familiar with, my wife included, are, are very, um, apt to, you know, support their own classroom with their own funds, more so than I think you would see in another district. And, and Reading gets, um, I hate to use this term, but, you know, biggest bang for its buck, I think. Um, but, that being said, I do think that, um, you know, education is expensive. And, um, as I say, if, um, you know, if you think education is expensive, try ignorance. Um, but, but I really think that, I really think that, you know, I would be an advocate for, um, supporting a budget that, um, you know, is reflected of what, what we need to, to, to get done. And in particular, in light of, you know, what we're faced with, um, in full-day kindergarten, um, I think it's important to, to present, um, you know, the side of it that is really, you know, it's just some of the things that I mentioned relative to the common core, um, park, you know, we're, and, you know, and I think, you know, technology too is expensive. And, um, I'm not really up to speed with what we have for technology. I, we did a great job in Danvis, and, um, you know, it would have something for me to compare to. So, I'd be interested in seeing that as well.
Thank you.
Further questions from the committee?
I think they've covered most of the ground. I was gonna cover some. I'm just gonna ask you, Gary, what's your thesis topic?
Um, well, I was just talking to Dr. Darty about it. Every time you, there's three courses that I have to take to prepare for the dissertation. And, um, I thought I had a really good topic in my first course, and then the second professor wanted me, I think, to do her dissertation. And then the third professor wanted me to do her dissertation, but finally have an advisor that's going back to where I started. So, it's basically on, um, teacher evaluation. Um, in particular, is the, the, the new Race to the Top Educator Evaluation Program making change? Are teachers changing because of it? And, um, you know, will that result in, um, you know, the high performance of our students? I mean, I won't get into that. That will take a long time. But, you know, and, and I'm looking at administrative perspective as much as teachers, because I think administrators are the ones out in the field seeing it and can tell if, that the teachers are. But you have to always be careful asking somebody about their dissertation topic. I have been warned, you have to have an elevator speech. I'm gonna cut it off right there.
[laughing]
Then they're done that, so.
School committee is set. It's like, are set with questions?
If I may, if we have time for one more quick one?
We don't, but absolutely go.
[laughing]
And if I might, I, I do apologize to the FinCon. We, it does look as though we're gonna be running a little later than expected, so I apologize. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Halsey.
So, um, kind of in, in, in the theme of the question I asked Amy, uh, I mean, you've commented on full-day kindergarten, and I think all of us realize that this is an emerging, you know, not only challenge, but an emerging obligation that we wanna find a way to fulfill. Um, and what that says, kind of with the Expanded Rise Program and full-day kindergarten, I mean, we're gonna have in our school system, essentially from the time a child is a toddler till they're ready to go off to college, um, we probably are gonna have more involvement in their waking hours than anybody, um, maybe even their parents. And, and I wanna come back to this idea of the partnership around, um, the issue of substance abuse. And what do you see as the, as the school's role? I know that in, in your earlier comments, you, it sounds like you've been kind of a pioneer here in Reading at least. And maybe you could expand on your thoughts as to the school's role in that partnership?
Yeah, as you said, it's, it's, it's a, you know, and the whole concept of our casa is it's a community, it's a community issue, but everybody has a role in it. And, you know, I believe that, um, I'm, I'm a strong advocate for prevention, and, and Dr. Darty knows that. I've talked to him about it. And, um, I think that, um, you know, an ounce of prevention, as they say, is worth a pound of cure. And, um, you know, I, I think that it takes a while for that to, to have a, an effect. But I'm, I'm really concerned, not, not just about substance abuse either, but the mental health of our, of our student population. I know, um, I'm aware that in, in, I'm, I'm confident it's happening here, 'cause I know it's happening in other districts. But, um, you know, the, the level of anxiety that our students have, um, the pressure that they're under, and, and how they respond. And, you know, in particular, I'm, I'm, I'm really an advocate for not just knowledge, like, you know, I remember, um, I shouldn't say this, but I, I guess I won't. Um, the, the, ed, health education in a long time would be, you know, can you name the three ways to take drugs? Well, that would be a pretty stupid question to ask, 'cause they all know that. But, you know, can you, um, you know, what type of skills, um, can you provide those students so they can make better decisions, not just on their own, but help their friends? Um, I was aware of a situation, um, where there was a, um, in, in, in another district where a student, um, was in a, in an abusive relationship, um, as a senior in high school. And her friends didn't know what to do, you know? They should know what to do. And you can go back and look at, you know, circumstances in other communities. There was a really bad, horrific situation in Wayland not too long ago, where a young, young girl was, you know, strangled by her ex-boyfriend. And, but there were warning signs there, you know? And, and, you know, I don't know, I mean, and, and as parents, you're always gonna know what's happening, but I really think it's important for the students to be educated in terms of developing skills that they, they need to be able to respond to these, these issues that are prevalent. Thanks.
Closing statement?
Um, I think I pretty much covered everything, but, um, I think I've covered everything. I just would enjoy the opportunity to, to take my experience in education to the next level in terms of, um, I found it very rewarding to, um, I, as I was talking to, to Rob, and, and Elaine probably knows, I, I was the adapted physical education teacher at the Rise Preschool and had their children. And then I also taught high school, elementary, middle school, physical education in the course of my career. Now, I'm working with, um, aspiring teachers in physical education. And, um, it's been a really, it almost, almost closes the circle. I think this would close the circle, having this opportunity to be involved in policy.
Great, great.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Can I, I apologize to those that are here for our 7:30. So, can we continue? Mr. Robinson would like a sandwich.
[laughing]
Mr. Gibbs, please. Thank you so much for waiting, Mr. Gibbs.
Absolutely.
Rob Gibbs is our third and final candidate this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We will not rush.
[laughing]
So, please, an opening statement?
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you for taking your time out of your summers to, to be here as well. It's nice. You welcomed each of the candidates, which was, which was, uh, we all taken our time out as well. So, it's great for the common good of the town of Reading. Um, first of all, my wife and I, we moved here over 20 years ago to the town of Reading, 'cause we believed it was a, a great town and a, and a town. As one person said, you should move to Reading, 'cause you can get a bang for your buck here, um, with the great school system we have. I have, uh, three children, uh, currently in the system right now. I have a sixth grader. I have a, uh, incoming freshman at the high school, and a 10th grader as well, um, who've all received, uh, enriching and excellent educations, um, so far. Uh, I've been in teaching for over 25 years. I'm a current teacher at Woburn High School. Um, and I've taught in the election system as well, and the lab collaborative, um, in special education my, my whole career. Um, and I, my wife and I co-founded a nonprofit organization. Um, and I'm the current president and a working board member, um, who raises funds for people with Down Syndrome and, uh, and disabilities. Um, I guess I'll go into why I wanna do this, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
All right. Um, I did note that my kids have had a great, uh, education in Reading, um, starting in the Rise Preschool. Um, and I would like that to continue for all students within the system. Um, I think my special ed background, uh, would be helpful, uh, to the board, um, and would give in, some insight into programming. Um, and since I'm a, I'm a current teacher right now, I've been dealing with some of the new initiatives, uh, between the MCAS and park and DDMs and the retail, um, which would also give me some insight. Um, and one of my, you know, I, I sat back and I really thought why I wanted to do this. And, um, one of the reasons, I attended the Blue Ribbon Conference at the high school, and I was so inspired by the teachers. I presented last year, um, on our learning center we have at Woburn, which we're very proud of. Um, but then, uh, I sat in a, in a classroom of, of a Reading teacher, um, and I was just amazed at the technology. And, and my son's teacher last year in history, uh, Kerry Gallagher. Um, so I just thought that was amazing. Loved to be a part of something like that. Um, and I was just inspired at the conference.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
School committee this time? Go ahead, Mrs. Doxey.
Well, I'm pretty repetitive. I ask the same question. I know you're coming from, um, a position of firsthand experience or, or second-hand experience, as the case may be. Um, but I'm wondering, as an expert on, a working expert on special education, um, coming into a system where you won't be necessarily frontline enacting the things that we're talking about, can you talk about how you'll manage that relationship and the organizational chart and communicate?
Yeah, yeah. I, I guess, you know, Gary said, you know, an expert. I mean, there's so many facets of special education. Um, and there's so much to, I don't know, all the facets of, of the Reading schools. I, I know more of what we do in Woburn, but I've seen firsthand some of the, um, programming that is done at, at Reading. And I would wanna learn more about what they do. But I, I know that, um, that special education is one quarter of the budget, uh, the, the system in Reading. Um, and I know we can be more efficient with those dollars, uh, with programming and bringing programs into the system. Um, so I, I definitely would have some insight, uh, moving maybe some of the programs that way.
Mr. Arena?
Um, you've heard tonight, uh, in the other questions that have been asked of the other candidates, the real challenge is on the financial side. What I call kind of the business of school. How do you make the trade-offs between potential programs? How do you prioritize scarce resources of people, time, uh, money, of course? What's your experience been, uh, as an educator or in any of your administrative roles with Smith's Harvest in that capacity?
Well, yeah, I mean, sitting on a, on a working board, we have a Smith's Harvest. We have to sit down together as friends and, um, we're on the board, and also people have invested interest in, in people with, with special needs. And we have to divide those dollars up. And we've always had some healthy discussions each year. We, we break that money up and distribute it to, I think, eight different organizations, uh, who are throughout the state. Um, and those are healthy discussions. We try to work cooperatively, and we have different perspectives. Um, and I, I, the bottom line, like I just said, I think you have to work cooperatively, and you have to listen to people. And since I'm one of the co-founders, I don't have the say in everything, um, because I wanna value everyone on the board. And, um, so I think that perspective from Smith's Harvest helps me with the budgeting piece. Um, professionally, budgeting, I, I don't have any oversight in the budget. Um, but I do have my say from the special ed director on what works and what doesn't work within the system. How can we use our dollars effectively in Woburn? Um, which I've, I've always had, uh, my, my two cents in it professionally, since I've been doing this for so long. I think it's helped me. Um, and I think decision-making with budget for me is, you know, you gotta look, I like the saying, look 30,000 feet up. Um, because for me, I'm working with, you know, 25 students, um, liaison for it. And I just can't think about just each student individually. I have to think about the big picture and how the budget works. Because if you put money in one area, you have to take away from another area. You have to prioritize when it comes to budgets.
Thank you. And the school committee? Mrs. West?
Maybe you could, uh, comment. Some of the other candidates have talked about, uh, their perspective on early childhood edu- education and, and how that, um, issue is facing our district and our town.
Yeah, that's, that's a big issue, because we know there's a, a need, um, for space at the, uh, at the pre-K and the, and the full-day K. And also affects the high school as well, um, where there's a need for space at the high school. Uh, and I think that's a big issue on everyone's plate in this room right now. And it's everyone's mind. How can we do it efficiently, effectively? Um, we, we over, we had a pass for the monies for the library. Um, and so now that, there's a squeeze for the dollars. And I, like everyone in this room, I got my tax bill and it, and it rise. Um, and so, and that's something, an issue that we all have to face in town and make a priority and try to do it the most efficient way possible. Um, but we know the research is out there, and we know that full-day K is something that's gonna help. And also, if we can get more kids into the Rise Program as well and, and bring revenue in that way, I think that would help the budget. Uh, but we know the most important thing is the education of children in this town. And the earlier we get these kids into working with teachers, my kids benefited greatly working with Gary, of course, and, um, and other great teachers at the Rise Program. Um, but I, would definitely help, um, if we can service more kids in our Rise Program with the great teachers that we have there. Um, but we also have to think about the, uh, the, everyone in town, um, about the, the scarcer dollars that we have, um, the concerns about the, the big picture, the budget. And, um, you know, how do you go to the town and ask for more money, and how do you do it effectively? This town is efficient with the money. I mean, the, when the lowest pu- pu- purple, um, pur- purple, uh, purple, pupil expenditures, um, we are efficient in this town, which is, which is great. But we have to continue to do that and use our money wisely.
From the Board of Selectmen?
I'm gonna go back to my familiar question. You know, anybody that knows me knows that this is a very hot-button issue. Um, I think for our, for our whole town, and that is, um, the role that the school department plays in the partnership, um, on the challenges that are facing our children, whether it be substance or otherwise. I'm, I'm interested in your thoughts as to the role that school fits. How, how does the school department fit into that partnership?
Yeah, I, I, the, schools are, are one piece of, of the pie. Um, we also, you know, put responsibility in the parents. We put the responsibility, you know, I'm a coach. I've been a coach for 25 years. I mean, I, I've had a lot of interactions with students that have struggled with drugs and alcohol, um, counseled a lot of students, um, that have come to me personally and looked for guidance. I've talked to a lot of parents and very concerned about this. I, I know the, my kids are very concerned. The, uh, zero tolerance policy that we've put in place in this town, I think it's been effective at least for my boys, 'cause it's on their mind. Um, I, they've made decisions socially around this policy, and I, I've seen it's been very effective. Um, and the schools have a, a big role to play. I mean, that we, us as educators are with the kids for, you know, seven hours during the day. Um, and we play a big role in the programs that we support in town, also play a big role, um, for the students. And, uh, and I think that, you know, it's, again, where are you gonna allocate the dollars? Are you gonna, you know, and I understand that the schools have a, a big role to play, but, you know, how much can we fund and can we support even more programming in the school? Um, you know, it's, it, it comes down to priorities again, John. And I, I think it's a great question. I, you know, as more, as much as we can do is, is better.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
I'm gonna steal one of the questions down here. What, uh, you can just talk about what, what made you decide to, to throw your hat in the ring?
Yeah, I, I think, um, I think a couple of things. Uh, you know, I, I think I talked about, um, I, I believe, um, in the direction the school system's going right now. Uh, and I, and I believe also in the, the current committee right now. I think you do all have in your best interest of all the students. Um, and I like to be a part of that. Um, and I believe that's some big decisions coming up. And I like to be a part of those big decisions, um, where, you know, I, I know that the economy's doing better right now, but the money's becoming more scarce. Uh, I like to be part of those decisions. Um, I like to be part of decisions, uh, when it comes to the Early Childhood Center or any type of decision that we make. Um, and like I said before, I was inspired at Blue Ribbon. Um, I'd like to be a part of, uh, um, the decisions when it comes to a, the system right now. I, I think this is a- I think this is a, the system is an envy of many of the surrounding towns. And I know that this, it's also an envy that the school committee works with the finance and the selectmen as well as it does and works as a team for a common goal. And I think my experience working cooperatively with my board that I work on, and I think that I could also be helpful as well.
Kevin?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Rob, for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. And thank you for stealing my recurrent question to all the candidates, as well as you, Chuck. Just real quickly, talk a little bit about maybe some of your goals that you would see, you know, if you were selected between you and the committee with what's, knowing with what's in front of you.
Well, I guess all three of the candidates, I think, are first goal to get to speed and, you know, a lot of the issues that, you know, we don't see or we don't read, I think it's one thing, my first goal to get up to speed and kinda get a better understanding how the board works. But big picture, I know that right now is, pretty soon it's gonna be the budget and looking at the budget and prioritizing with the budget is one thing that's, you know, is kinda deciding between wants and needs and kinda the direction of the school system's gonna go in. I think another issue that, one of my goals, I know there's a lot of new administrators in town. I know communication was one of those issues that popped up from a lot of parents. I've talked to a lot of parents in town and we got a couple emails the other night about it. And I think for me, listening to people and then also directing people in the right direction. And we directed a couple of parents in the, hopefully in the right direction to get some more information, but I think the communication can be better and I think that's another goal that I would have.
Thank you.
School committee? Selectmen? Closing statement, Mr. Gibbs?
Sure. I was just gonna get up and leave. Again, I thank you for your time that you've put in moving the town, as I said before, in the right direction. And I understand you have a very difficult decision ahead of you. You have three great candidates that have worked in the field of education and I think all of us are very excited to be a part of it. So I'd just like to say that I'd like to, if I was on board, I'd be very excited and put some energies towards common goals.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Again, I can't thank the three candidates enough for spending their time with us this evening and be willing to volunteer to be on the school committee. With that said, I'd like to open it up to discussion between the two boards and then I would like to move to begin a voting process. So are there comments that anyone might have? That's fine. I was trying to think of an equitable way of doing a roll call vote. I decided we'll, we'll try it this way. I'm gonna go in reverse alphabetical order for fun. So it actually is a fairly good distribution between going back and forth between the two committees.
And the last shall be first.
So the way this will work is I will call each board member's name. I'll ask them to cast their vote for one of the candidates. If someone wants to try to help me keep honest as we go through this, but I'll also, I'll also tell them that. So, Mrs. Webb?
Yes, thank you.
Nope, sorry.
Webb? Webb, excellent.
Oh, Mrs. West. Oh, my goodness gracious.
I've used to always being last. I just assumed it, so.
Okay, we're gonna fight over who's first now.
We are absolutely gonna edit this tape. Oh, my God.
Wait up, can we use, no, maiden names don't work out.
Mrs. West.
Thank you, Mr. Crusoe. This is a very, very tough decision. I have to say, I thank all three of the candidates for coming out and spending the time. They're all really, really well qualified, so this is a very difficult decision. I will cast my vote for Gary Nyhan. I think between his length of experience and the town meeting experience he has and some of his budget experience that, that's where I put my vote, but I really thank everybody else and would ask that you continue to be involved and run again and, you know, stay involved because it's really good to have you.
Mrs. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Crusoe. So we do all have the resumes, we heard the candidates talk. It's an impressive package of resumes and I feel at this point, one of the best things that we need on the committee going forward is, they're all educators, so we've got that and administrative backgrounds, budget background, but really, I'm gonna cast my vote for Amy Kohler. She brings what we need.
Thank you. Mr. Sexton?
Yeah, again, I'd like to reiterate and thank all three candidates coming out tonight. It's really a difficult choice and very qualified candidates for this position. At this time, I think because of an edge and experience on both sides of what I feel the school community's gonna be dealing with, I'm gonna cast my vote for Gary Nyhan. Nyhan, excuse me?
Nyhan.
Nyhan.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
You know, just to, again, reiterate what everyone said, any, any one of the candidates could fill this role and, you know, it takes a lot of courage to come forward and put yourself out there and go through this process and I thank you for that. I would go with Gary Nyhan.
Thank you. Mr. Halsey?
So I cast my vote for a secret ballot. And I say that because, you know, I came into this meeting knowing two of the candidates very well. Amy, you made me feel like I know you very well and I kinda can't thank all of you enough and I do have to tell you that this is not an easy decision to make, but for many of the aforementioned reasons, I'm gonna vote, cast my vote for Gary Nyhan.
Mr. Ensminger?
Again, my thanks to all who came out tonight. I think every candidate exhibited his or her own particular strength and I was happy to see that. I think you were all strong candidates. Having to make a decision, I am gonna go with Gary Nyhan on the basis of his many years of involvement with Reading. I put a lot of stock in being a twenty-year town meeting member. I think that shows a very good balance and experience with the trade-offs that have to happen in a town government official.
Thank you. Mrs. Doxer?
I second the idea of closed voting. And I do so because I'd like to vote for all of you, but that would be cheating and I can't and it's open. So, Amy, I feel like through paper and through in person, it's been wonderful to get to know you and I would love for you to come back in April and run because I think you'd be an amazing addition to the committee. The same, this is so, the same with Gary. I think that you have so much to add and I've listened to it and we've debated and I've learned something every time we've spoken. We often are from elliptical machines having our conversations and I think that you would be a powerful addition to the committee as well. I cast my vote for Rob and I believe that that's for the rounding off of the committee as well as for your strengths and your different experiences, both on the board of Samantha's Harvest, your knowledge from all dimensions of special ed and coaching and athletics and I, I think that's an important link to make along with the substance abuse. And saying this, I realize that there's expertise on all sides with those, but I long-windedly cast my vote.
I gotcha.
But that's nothing new.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Doxer. I'm next on the list. I cast my vote for Mr. Nyhan. Mrs. Broowski?
I'd like to thank all three candidates as well and I look forward and hope I have the opportunity to work with each of you moving forward, but I will cast my vote for Mr. Nyhan.
Mr. Arena?
I have a little vignette to tell tonight's candidates. I had the ambition one day to run for town meeting, which is reasonably easy, and then I decided to amp it up a bit and try to become a member of the finance committee. I'm not new to matters of finance and I was turned down and I couldn't understand why. And part of it was just familiarity and I vowed that evening that I wouldn't be turned down again and I showed up at every financial meeting, every financial forum, every meeting that group and I was in the front of that group. And so the next time that happened, I wasn't a candidate, I was the guy who'd spent the last year with that group deliberating and chatting and they were kind enough to entertain my occasional questions. And I'd urge you all to do the same. Obviously, two members tonight will not get the outcome they desired, but if you have an opportunity to look to next April or the next, the next position here or even a next position in town government, and nothing impresses the current board than a dedication to show up each and every meeting. It speaks volumes, more than, even more than you can say tonight, you can say over the course of the next six months or one year. I'll cast my vote for Gary Nyhan as well. His length of experience, his point in his career, having now completed his formal work experience and now looking back, it's gonna be a real asset for the town.
Thank you very much. I will echo everything that was said here this evening. Thank you very much. This was an extremely difficult decision to make. The tally has Mr. Nyhan at eight, Mr. Gibbs at two, and Ms. Kayler, excuse me, at one.
I think it's eight-one-one. Eight-one-one.
Oh.
Yeah. Mrs. Doxer, voter.
Yeah, in fact, again, I screwed up on the English and I'll screw up on the math side as well. So that's just a perfect night for me. I'm sure I failed that one too. Mr. Nyhan, congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you to the other candidates. That concludes the school committee's business and now we get started with the financial forum.
Can we take a break?
We should probably adjourn.